Good evening and welcome to the Livonia School Board meetings tonight. We actually have two meetings tonight. We have a committee of the whole meeting where we will be getting reports and having discussion from three different committees. The curriculum committee, the finance committee, and the policy committee. And then at 7:30, we're going to have a special meeting, and this is a voting meeting, and we will be voting on some bond found items to get them going and started, hopefully, and there are six of those and an investment advisor appointment. So we have a full evening this morning. We are at Webster Elementary School and we'd like to thank the staff at Webster for hosting this meeting for us. And President Burton sends her regret she's not able to be with us this evening. If you'd like to get an agenda, we have some available for you to follow along. If you're at home and you'd like to follow along with our agenda, please go to our website, There will be a school board tab. Hover over that and you will find the agenda for tonight. We are going to begin our committee of the whole meeting with audience communication. I have several blue slips. Is there anyone else that would like to speak today? If you would, please fill out a blue slip and we'll be happy to have you come up and talk to us. We're going to begin today with Jackie McMillan. Hi Jackie.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Oakwist, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you tonight. If you are running low on fuel with no way to replenish your vehicle, you would probably do everything you could to conserve that fuel for as long as possible. You would coast, go slower, and take fewer trips until finally you're on your last few drops and your vehicle begins to sputter. You feel the car jerking and are hoping to go as far as you can, knowing there is nothing in sight when you finally run out. Eventually, you come to a stop and are faced with a decision. There are basically three choices. First, to stay with the vehicle, hoping that somehow fuel or a source to obtain fuel will magically appear. It's probably not the best choice, but it is a choice. Second, you could abandon your vehicle and go in search of fuel elsewhere. Finally, you could choose to push your vehicle until you locate a refueling station. This, of course, is a daunting task that most of us here know is impossible. It certainly is feasible to push a car, especially if the road is level or downhill, but when you come to an incline, what would you do? How long do you think you could even push your vehicle on level ground, let alone against even the slightest incline? And as you look down the long road, how far and how long would you last with no end, no fuel in sight? Livonia Public Schools has been cutting and coasting for many years. I was hired in 2000 and shortly after that, we began cutting corners everywhere we could to conserve our fuel. Teachers consistently have had support decreased while our workload and expectations have increased year after year for more than a decade. We have been committed all this time to helping the district conserve and cut those corners, but with the fuel gone and nothing in sight with which to refuel, we are unfortunately faced with some difficult decisions about our career paths. Do we stay with the vehicle even though it is out of fuel, hoping that someday something magical will happen? Do we abandon the vehicle and search for fuel elsewhere? Do we push the vehicle down the road for an endless amount of time and distance? What would your choice be? Would you wait, push, or abandon the vehicle? What do we do in these circumstances without also risking completely depleting our own personal supply? Something needs to change in public education and we need to work together to bring about that change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just a quick reminder, audience communication is a time for the board to listen to comments from the audience or people that would like to participate. It is not a question and answer or a dialogue time, and our policy states that each person will be given three moments, three minutes. So we'll go on with our next, Adrian Hosking.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Oakwist. My name is Adrian Hosking and I am a teacher at Churchill High School in the Autism Center Program. I have been a teacher in the Livonia Public Schools District for over eight years. I serve on the wonderful Webster PTA School where my nine-year-old son attends, and I have another son who will be starting kindergarten in the fall at Hayes Elementary. I also have a one-year-old daughter who I'd love to raise through the LPS District. For as long as I can remember, I have always wanted to be a teacher, so much so that while studying undergrad at EMU, there was no other consideration where I would focus my studies. I wish I could give that advice to young students now, trying to decide on a career who might want to pursue the art of teaching. Yes, teaching isn't art. It's a gift. I've heard it said many times, not only about myself, but about many of my friends and colleagues who are teachers. "You have a gift," they say. "I don't know how you do it," they say. Livonia Public Schools has some of the best teachers in the state with the best gifts and sharing them with the wonderful children year after year. As I stated before, I have spent my entire eight years teaching career in Livonia, all of which have been spent with some of the district's most special and unique children. I love my job and I couldn't imagine doing any other than sharing my gift with these wonderful kids year after year. But life is a harsh reality. Being an adult is hard. I have a wonderful family. I have financial responsibilities, and I would love to become a homeowner right here in the city of Livonia and submit my commitment to this district and the community. However, being an eighth-year teacher on step three of the wage increase scale isn't affording me the opportunities I thought it would after nearly a decade in the profession. When there are teachers being hired with fewer years' teaching experience, starting at the same wage step as I currently am, I become discouraged. I have continued to prepare and teach with the same commitment and passion I had as a first-year teacher, while my salary has not reflected the same passion or commitment to me as an educator. Don't get me wrong, teaching for me has never been about the money, obviously, but as the provider for a family, it has to be a factor in my life decisions. And unfortunately, one of those decisions is whether or not staying in the district is a financially safe one for me. I know I'm not alone in having to entertain these tough decisions, and if Livonia Public Schools has the best educators and those educators are questioning their worth to the district, what will be left when they move on? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tina Angling.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Oakwist. My name is Tina Anglin. I've been a teacher at Coolidge Elementary in the ASD program. I've worked here for eight years. I know the past couple of months, my colleagues have shared their personal stories of how pay freezes and no-step advancements has come at a devastating cost to them personally. As uncomfortable as I am to be here under these circumstances, I wouldn't be true to myself or my profession if I too didn't voice my concerns. So here's my story. I grew up in Livonia, graduated from Churchill, and I've chosen to raise my own family in Livonia. I always knew I wanted to be a teacher. However, while going to college, I got a job at a wholesale sportswear distributor. I worked my way up through the company. However, after ten years of working in sales, I still felt the call to teach, and that's when I made the decision to leave that industry and go back to school to become a teacher. Upon graduation, I was hired into LPS and I was beyond excited. I love and respect LPS, and Livonia was the district I've always dreamed of working in. I knew that leaving my first profession meant a pay decrease, but after looking at the steps in the Saylor Scale, I knew that I would be making what I had made in my previous position in a few years of teaching. The reality is, eight years later, even with two degrees, I'm still bringing home less money than I did 14 years ago selling T-shirts. In fact, with the increased cost of insurance and pension, I'm making less this year than I did last year. Despite the fact that I have eight years of experience teaching and my annual evaluations were teary and reflecting that I'm a highly effective teacher in many areas, including student growth, my story is not unique. This is happening all over the district and teachers are frustrated. I know I cannot continue on this path. I cannot continue to invest in a profession that isn't investing in me. As highly educated professionals, we need a path to grow with our district, both professionally as well as financially. The consequences of pay freezes, furlough days, and no-steps have come at a devastating cost for teachers of this district. LPS may be able to balance their budget, but personally, I'm no longer able to balance my own. I'm unable to pay back student loans. I can't afford to get my son braces. I'm barely living paycheck to paycheck. I have cut back all I can cut back, and I'm still struggling with no end in sight. Over the past eight years, I've invested a lot of time and money into becoming a knowledgeable and skilled teacher. Since I've been hired in Livonia, I've earned my master's in autism. I spent over $2,000 on a reading course to renew my certificate. I spend lots of money and time creating a welcoming, nurturing classroom environment filled with visuals and manipulatives that foster student growth and support student learning. I look for ways to raise money by creating fundraisers for ASD Center, writing grants to help bring technology and resources into my classroom. I am invested in my students and I'm invested in this district. Now is the time to show LPS employees and the residents that we are a blueprint for continuous improvement, a district that makes investments in our teachers so that we can continue to employ the best and the brightest, so we can continue to create a positive, welcoming, and safe environment where students, staff, and parents are eager to learn, work, and visit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Oakwist, board members. My name is Amy Paterotti and I'm a kindergarten teacher. I wanted to share my story with you as well. I began my journey with LPS when I was hired into the Great Start Readiness Program in November of 2009. I was so excited. I had just gotten married in July and was ecstatic to start teaching at a public school system after I'd already stopped for a few years and also taught at a Catholic school. I knew that Livonia Public Schools was superior to any of the private or public school districts in the area. My hope while teaching in GSRP was that it would lead to a full-time elementary teaching position and that my husband and I could start our family of four as we had already planned. Around this time, I also began my master's program in order to increase my knowledge in the field of teaching. We purchased a house in Livonia as it's a great city with a great school district and we wanted our future kids to be a part of it. In the fall of 2012, I got both my wishes at once. I was hired at Garfield Elementary and soon after found out I was pregnant. I was over the moon ecstatic that my life was coming together and I was going to have everything that I had ever wanted. However, in recent years, with the lacks of steps and pay increases, my life has become more and more challenging. My husband and I both work hard in order to provide for our son and pay our bills. We send our son to Jackson Center because it supports Livonia and we know that it's a great place filled with terrific staff. Jackson Center collects tuition once a month and averages about $1,000 a child. My bi-weekly paycheck as a teacher is actually less than one monthly payment made to Jackson. So here I am at a dilemma. My son is almost three and we have no current plans to have another child because we simply can't afford it.
Can I ask you to wind up?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that was something else? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought that was the signal.
Give her extra time.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, we can have extra time. Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no, that's okay. So as I said, we just don't have plans to have another child right now because we can't simply afford it. I feel like I'm sacrificing my family for my career, and it's a career that I truly love. Like so many of the amazing colleagues that I've worked alongside, I absolutely love being a teacher. Seeing children grow and learn is extremely rewarding. My family and I do not live an extravagant lifestyle. My husband, without a college degree, makes more than I do in a corporate position. In addition, he's an artist and he also paints to try to help ends me, and sometimes they just don't. I never thought I'd be faced with these challenges in a career where I have loyally served a school district. I've been with LPS now for seven years and I just don't know how long I can stay in the teaching position without being rewarded for my increasing knowledge and experience. I want my son to be proud of me. I want him to know that hard work and persistence does pay off. Part of the LPS focus this year is how does it feel? I feel like I'm making a positive difference in the lives of my students. However, I'm having to do so while carrying around the burden of the unknown. Can I continue to lead my dream of being a teacher and a mom?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Okay, with that, we'll go on to item two of our agenda, the curriculum committee, and we're going to have the school improvement presentation from the Webster Elementary staff, Mrs. Ellis and Mrs. Boca.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Laura. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's first curriculum topic is a school improvement presentation by the Webster staff. And as you all know, these school improvement presentations are ones that are near and dear to my heart because it allows our schools to showcase their school improvement efforts as well as the tremendous work that they do to educate all of the students who are entrusted to them. As you've heard me say before, the core business of schools is teaching and learning, and the core purpose of school improvement is to evaluate the effectiveness of that teaching and learning. Tonight, we have the pleasure of hearing another school improvement presentation by Webster School. We're going to hear some common elements that we've heard in other school improvement presentations. We're going to hear about the school's demographics. We're going to hear their school vision, mission, and beliefs, and we're going to hear about their school climate goal. But tonight's presentation is going to be a bit different because tonight, we're going to hear two school improvement plans. Because Webster houses two programs, the ACAT program as well as the ACT-18 program, the state of Michigan treats them as two separate schools within a school, and therefore, each of the programs has a separate school improvement plan. So we're going to hear about the goals in the ACAT program to support student learning and the goals in the ACT-18 program to support student learning. And although those school improvement plans are distinct from each other, they overlap. And so the presentation tonight will include means by which these two programs overlap, interface, and support each other. And tonight, we're going to hear from students via videos, and they're going to share how the strategies embedded in the school improvement plans directly influence their success as student learners. I'm very pleased this evening to introduce Mrs. Laura Boca, the principal of Webster School, who will introduce her school leadership team that is here tonight, and they will share with you their collaborative, collective, and relentless efforts to educate every style, every student at Webster School. Mrs. Boca.
This is my technology turn-on stick right here. We are so excited to have everybody here at Webster tonight. As our screen is loading up, I would just like to thank the Board of Education for joining us at our school tonight to get to hear about the work that we do every day with two of the most amazing populations that have come together and exist here at Webster, and we appreciate your dedication to our unique learners that we have in this district and offering the opportunity for us to have a school like this here in Livonia. Superintendent Oakwist, we're happy to have you. Members of Cabinet, welcome, and we're glad we have some audience members that are joining us to hear about the work that we do every day. I'm going to have Brandy be my clicker, and we did something tonight in the format of a prezi, something that we work with our students on, so we're going to move through this as you learn about everything you ever wanted to know about Webster's school improvement efforts. First of all, our staff. We are comprised of 30 teachers, which includes our special area teachers also. We also are supported by 16 paraprofessionals. We have support staff, teachers of speech and language, occupational therapists, physical therapists, our school social worker and ESAP, a school psychologist, and we're also so fortunate to have our program specialist and an ACAT facilitator for both of our programs also. And the heart of our school is our school secretaries, and Mrs. Schoolick is supporting us in the ranks back there, and we're happy to have her. You will also hear things about our community too, and ways that we've embedded our community into our school improvement efforts. We have a multitude of parent volunteers that help support our students and opportunities that they need to grow certain areas of interests and loves that they have. So we'll talk to you about that within our plan tonight too. And I've also welcomed Ms. Crystal Frank, who is our PTA president, who's going to share with you a few words right now.
Thank you. Welcome on behalf of the Webster PTA. So we're excited to have you here, and it's been an honor for our PTAs to partner with Mrs. Boca and the staff here at Webster to really be inclusive of both organizations, both programs that you have here at the school. And we have amazing parent volunteers who are willing to help and partner with the teachers and the staff, so we're grateful to be able to be...
...of service to them and to provide all of the activities that we do. So thank you very much.
The people that you're going to hear from tonight at both of the tables are comprised of our leadership team. We have our two programs that come together with people in different roles, our facilitators, our math reps, our school improvement chairs, our literacy support people, and really people that contribute above and beyond what we ask them to do every day to support our students' learning. So I'm appreciative to this leadership team. You can see their names as they take on different parts of the presentation today, but they truly are examples of those 30 staff members that I shared with you that give of themselves their time and their commitment to our learners that we have here at Webster. You can see our mission is right here that we dedicate ourselves to ensuring a safe, nurturing learning environment that facilitates personal growth and meaningful interactions of all children and adults. Students will leave our school empowered to think clearly, care deeply, and act wisely. And you will see how our mission comes alive in the work that we do in our school improvement efforts. And this is driven by our vision too, that we will become a school where the unique developmental and cognitive needs of all students are met. Our students will require knowledge and skills through differentiated experiences that honor unique learning styles as they become lifelong learners. And there are beliefs that we have that drive the decisions that we make here at Webster, and those beliefs are that all students should have opportunities to be authentically engaged, that children can learn and want to learn, all children need a safe, respectful, and trusting environment in which to learn, and all students contribute to the community as you can see in our student service learning work that they do. All students have unique skills and talents and multiple learning styles that must be honored, and that they should have the opportunity to learn process skills, which are key for students to think clearly, care deeply, and act wisely. So when you hear about the strategies and the activities that we're doing within our school improvement goals, all of those things come alive through our beliefs too. We're going to start by talking about our ACAT program, and I'm going to let Mr. David Zizinski, who is our program facilitator, talk to you about this next part of our presentation.
Good evening. So I'm going to start by giving you some idea of the composition of our school and where our kids are coming from. So this first slide, we have a 54% male, 46% female population in the ACAT program. You see a breakdown of our grades, how large they are, 23 firsts. Our largest group is our fourth graders at 74 and our existing group at 60 with our sixth graders. And you can see in parentheses, our out-of-district students. 5% socio-economically disadvantaged, 7% English language learners, and you see our top ethnic groups, 72% whites, 19 Asian, and 5% two or more races. We do have specific entrance criteria to qualify for the ACAT program, and so here's a quick breakdown of some things we do. We give first and achievement tests based on set academic standards, and we're looking for students that are reaching pretty high scores, as you can see, all in and around the mid 90th percentile or above. And for those who meet our criteria in our achievement testing, we invite them back for an ability test, and we use the COGAT cognitive ability test, and we look for similar scores in the cognitive ability test as well. So part of our school improvement goal is identifying subgroups and using those to shape our school improvement goals. Unfortunately for us, we have a difficult time identifying subgroups because our state data, we score very high. And so actually finding a subgroup to focus in on that might need service in one academic area or another is quite difficult, and we're unable to do that at this time. So our school improvement goals, as you can see, we base them on teacher observation input into things that the Common Core is leading us in the direction of mathematics problem-solving, comprehension of informational text, for example. So those are our focuses for our school improvement goals. Before I get to this, I, oh no, this is what I need to do. So I wanted to, sorry, share with you some data of how we are performing on the M-Step and the MEET for that matter. I have last year's M-Step data with the sources, michigan schools, michiganschooldata.org, a state website. So how they report the data, I didn't get an exact percentage, but the highest category the state is reporting is above 95% proficient or advanced, and so all of our grade levels in ELA and math grades three through six are greater than 95% proficient or advanced. Just some highlights from that. For example, our third grade in math, we are at 92% advanced. In ELA, you know, our sixth graders are 73% advanced, and we have, you know, other, you know, highly advanced scores, so that's something we're very proud of. Our students are performing very high on the M-Step and MEET. So there comes our problem in terms of identifying subgroups. You can't really tease out subgroups when greater than 95% of your students are advanced or proficient. And so we're going to get into a little later some more details about our school improvement goals. So you see some things that we're going to talk about a little bit more, classroom observation in terms of identifying our goals, monitoring our goals. Formative assessment is something we have committed to the past couple of years, anything from teacher observation to, say, an exit ticket to gauge student, you know, literally in that particular day, we use a number of formative assessments to gauge and track our school improvement goals.
Now you're going to hear from Ms. Megan Sprou, who is our program specialist for our ACT-18 program, and will tell you the story of how our other unique population comes to be in our walls. This is a really cute picture of me and a couple of kiddos at Wakata, and I couldn't not put it in.
Good evening. So our ACT-18 program, it was created to meet the needs of a low incidence population across Western Wayne County. We are a RESA program that is housed in Livonia Public Schools, and Livonia is fortunate enough to house the programs for students with autism, for students with moderate cognitive impairments, as well as for students with visual impairments. And all three of these programs, part of that greater scheme is housed right here at Webster, so we're very fortunate to work all three of those populations in here. We have 78 students here at Webster, and those students are within three different programs, like I described. Our program for students with moderate cognitive impairments is from preschool through sixth grade. That program continues up at Emerson Middle School for seventh and eighth. We have the Franklin Transition Program for high school, and then our kids go on to post-secondary education at the Skill Center as well. In addition to that, and also those classrooms, we have five classes that are preschool through sixth grade, so we have a lot of cross-age classes. Our classrooms can house up to three grade levels, depending on the demographics and what the need is at that time. Those classrooms can have up to 15 students with one teacher and one paraprofessional. Our program for students with autism has two classrooms from fourth to sixth grade, and again, we have a continuum that goes through post-secondary for that population. We can have up to seven students with autism in a classroom and one teacher and one to two paraprofessionals, depending on the needs of the students. and one teacher and one to two paraprofessionals, depending on the needs of the students. Additionally, new to Webster this year, we have the preschool program for students with visual impairments. That again is an ACT-18 program. And it's kind of a bridge between the birth-to-three program for the county and kindergarten experiences. And it's a half-day preschool program. About thirty percent of our A-CAP population has some form of a healthcare plan. So we have kids that have complex educational needs as well as health concerns that can range from seizure disorders to bleeding, significant allergies, and other complex medical needs. Like I mentioned before, we have a continuum that goes through twelfth grade and also post-secondary. We also have an entrance criteria. This is considered to be a more restrictive program than what you would find in your local elementary school. We service eleven districts across Western Wayne County. And students are referred to us by their home districts. As part of that referral process, a home district would submit an individualized education plan, the most recent MET testing or multidisciplinary evaluation team summaries, behavior plans, healthcare plans, and any other pertinent information. From there, we go out and we do an observation of the students in the setting that they're currently in to see if there are some other strategies that we can suggest to make that placement work. If it's determined that that placement isn't appropriate and that this would be a better fit for that student, we then invite the families out to visit this elementary school and to see what this would look like for their child. If the parent is in agreement with the placement, we then go to a registration process where the student registers, or the parent registers rather, with Livonia Public Schools. And we complete an IEP to place the child in this program. So ACT-18 programs are really designed for kids who are struggling and need lots of support that their current placement cannot provide. Our program is designed to provide students with instructions so that they can achieve supported independence in adulthood. So students, our curriculum, we follow the general education curriculum, but our students require some modifications in order to benefit from that curriculum. And what we follow is the essential elements of the Common Core curriculum. These essential elements are designed for students with significant cognitive disabilities and are clearly linked to grade level academic content standards. And they promote access to the general curriculum for all students. They're developed with the belief that all students, including students with significant cognitive disabilities, deserve to have the right to a quality educational experience. I was at Emerson Middle School today in the seventh grade classroom. And the general ed students are working on geometry this week, and so is the center-based class. They're working on the same concepts, just at the level that's appropriate for those students. So the essential elements help students to the maximum extent possible have opportunities to be involved in and meet the same challenging expectations that are established for all students. The one other thing I meant to say about the essential elements is that they're leveled. There are four different levels of performance standards in the essential elements. And those levels are tied to students' cognitive abilities, and that leads us to our assessment. Our kids don't take the M-Step. They take an alternative assessment, which is called MY Access. And MY Access is in the area of English Language Arts, Math, and Science. There are three levels to MY Access. A Level One for essential elements would pair with our participation level for MY Access generally. The next level is Supported Independence, and then Functional Independence. MY Access is administered on a one-on-one basis. The teacher can make modifications to materials to make it accessible. For example, they could use actual objects rather than pictures so that students can understand the concepts. They can provide communication means or a communication system so that students can express their ideas and can express what they know. And part of the assessment is observational, meaning that we can watch the students to see how they are able to complete tasks in a meaningful, authentic learning environment. Now, social studies, there isn't a participation or Supported Independence level of social studies from MY Access. So there's a district-created assessment. When developing our school improvement goals, we didn't have the results back from MY Access yet. But we did have the results from our district's social studies assessment. So we use that as part of our school improvement. Another way that teachers are assessing students is through RESA-developed assessments, which look at both literacy and math. And those are a great way for teachers really to dive in and see how to develop their instruction. Our programs at Emerson and at Franklin Transition Plan also follow the same school improvement plan that we follow here at Webster, focusing in on the same areas, just at a more advanced level. And so knowing that the essential elements and also that MY Access is leveled, we wanted to make sure that our school improvement goals were leveled as well as we have learners at many different levels. So we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get into our school improvement data and how we were able to level those areas.
Now you'll hear from our school improvement chair, Ms. Brandy Roth, who will talk to you about our goals that we have in place for this year.
Thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit about how we landed with these goals and how we got here. It's about four years ago, we read Schmucker's book Focus and also Lucy Cuckins' book Pathways to the Common Core. When we really realized the Common Core was a direction we were all heading, and we really took some time to dive into those standards and really get to know them and get a handle on them and what it would look like in action at Webster. So we also took a look at the Smarter Balanced Assessment models and what are the tasks our students are going to be asked as the state test shifted from the MEET to what ended up being the M-Step. And as David spoke to our data, it's kind of, we really have to depend on what we see as classroom teachers and the dialogue that we have across grade level to identify trends in what we see our students' needs being. So we definitely decided for reading that we needed to look at nonfiction comprehension as well as integrating that into our writing goal. So we developed some school improvement assessment tasks that allowed them to have some experiences, again modeled after the Smarter Balanced Assessments, to integrate those skills. So our reading goal has been, "All Webster students will demonstrate a proficiency in reading closely to determine what the text says explicitly, to make logical references from it, and cite specific textual evidence when writing or speaking to support conclusions drawn from the text." And to support that, our writing goal says, "All Webster students will demonstrate a proficiency writing information explanatory text to examine and convey complex ideas and information accurately through the effective selection, organization, and analysis of content." We've had these goals for a few years now, but our way we have measured them and the assessment tasks that we have given have changed slightly over the years as we see what has worked and what hasn't worked and giving us the most information. And Rebecca will be speaking more to that shortly. So we also have a math goal, which is, "All students will demonstrate a proficiency to make sense of problems and persevere in solving them." And for this, we took a look at the standards for mathematical practice and came to a quick consensus that this making sense of problems and persevering in solving them was the standard that we really needed to zoom in on. Many of our students come to us with, and they are great with numbers, but their thinking needs to be more sophisticated with problem solving. Or they may have been able to get to the answer, but they lack the ability to explain their mathematical reasoning. So we created a goal that allowed us to integrate explicit problem-solving instruction in each classroom outside of our existing mathematics time. And we found grade-level tasks that we give in the fall and a post in the spring, the same task based on their grade level. And we measure their ability to explain their mathematical thinking, give that evidence, and also how, we timed it for how long they were going to be able to persevere in the task. And Terry will talk more about that. As David spoke to, it is challenging for us to find meaningful data from our standardized test scores because of the nature of our population. We do rely heavily on professional dialogue with each other about anecdotal observations and the use of formative assessment that Kathy will be talking more about. And some of our students come to us, some of our students have been immersed in this work for three years. And some of them are new to our school as fourth graders this year. So all of the students in our classroom don't have the same background with our work on the school improvement stuff. But I will say that after all this work developing these goals, we as a staff feel really good about it. And we feel that we have meaningful school improvement goals that support authentic teaching and learning in our classrooms. And it seems like a natural fit to our vision and mission. And we feel we are preparing our students for the shift in state assessments, which, once we got our results, we had support for that. And that we are making them collegiate career-ready as they move on to middle school.
Our ACT-18 program also has three goals. And one of the things in development we looked at was we wanted to create something that could mirror what the A-CAP program was doing. How could we take our population of students and make something that was meaningful for them? That was something we used in consideration. We also wanted something that was in alignment with the essential elements so that we knew instruction was being delivered that was meaningful and that the students were progressing and learning. So we started out, two years ago, looking at our MY Access results when we had them to look at what we could kind of gather from that. And we noticed, one of the first things was our students had some issue and challenges with money skills. So we wanted a way to incorporate that in our goals that we set. We also saw that the A-CAP program was going to focus on problem solving. So we kind of wanted to bring those two elements together so that it was a meaningful goal for our students. So our goal is, "All Webster students will demonstrate a proficiency to make sense of money problems and persevere in solving them." And that's how we kind of brought those two things together. In terms of reading, again, we wanted to sort of mirror something that the A-CAP program was focusing on, that nonfiction comprehension piece. And for us, that began with looking at the main idea for what our students were reading. How could they identify that to show understanding of the text that they were reading? Last year, we got some data we looked at. Our sixth graders that took the social studies district assessment really had some difficulty. So we wanted to use that to help us guide what our goal was moving forward. So we decided to focus on that all Webster students will demonstrate a proficiency by identifying the main idea from informational, social studies, or geography text. And that was a way for us to bring those two things together for our students. In terms of writing, we wanted to focus on demonstrating proficiency in producing or contributing to writing an opinion to show understanding of a science topic. And that for our students is going to be writing expression, not just the mechanical act of writing. So it might be by selecting a picture, but that they're getting that information and they're able to display that. And it's their own opinions and their own ideas, which was really important and meaningful for us. We began by rubrics that were teacher-developed to help us assess these skills. And two years ago, we decided, after looking at the data, that we needed something more that kind of could show us in a more detailed way what our students were learning. So we developed a four-leveled continuum for us to add to our rubrics that could show when students were showing the highest score they could get on the rubric, a way for them to move up to the next level. And so that for us has been something that's been wonderful and really allowed us to show growth moving forward. So we're very excited about that.
Ms. Terry Maisig, who is our math chair, is going to talk to us more specifically about our A-CAP math goal.
Thank you. Good evening. The standards for mathematical practice describe varieties of expertise and mathematical educators at all levels should seek to develop in their students. So as you've heard tonight, as we were looking to develop a math goal that was of importance to our students in our building and program, we also looked forward at how would this goal lead to a longstanding significance in students' mathematical education in college, career opportunities, and beyond. Our math goal, as it is up on the screen, "All Webster students will demonstrate a proficiency to make sense of problems and persevere in solving them." This mathematical practice involves a way students can explain to themselves the meaning of a problem and also looking at the ways they can enter into solving the problem. It might feel almost like being a detective, and you're looking for clues or evidence in order to solve that mystery. Students proficient with this practice believe that then they are mathematicians, and they are trying to come up with ways to try several methods in order to come to a solution. According to Common Core State Standards, Math Practice Number One, it states, "Mathematically proficient students start by explaining to themselves the meaning of a problem and looking for entry points to its solution. They analyze the givens, constraints, relationships, and goals. They make conjectures about the form and meaning of the solution and plan a solution pathway, rather than simply just jumping into that solution attempt. They try special cases and simpler forms of the original problem in order to gain insight into its solution. They monitor and evaluate their progress, and then they change the course if necessary." So using real-world examples, we teach our students, when they are presented with a problem, they can make a plan and then carry out the plan. And then after they're done, go ahead, back, and evaluate it and look at its success. This means there needs to be thinking about what should be done before, during, and after the process. When we model with our students, we basically are doing a think-aloud strategy. So we're sharing our thoughts out loud so that they can actually hear what we're saying. But we also have posters that are presented in our rooms so that they can also visually see what it is that we're explaining. So what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about the problem-solving steps that we use. So there are four specific areas. The first one is reading and understanding the problem. So you need to first take a look at the problem and understand what is it asking? Can I state the problem in my own words? What am I trying to find out or do? What are the unknowns? And what information do I obtain from the problem? What's missing? What is needed? Once you've gone through that, then what we do is we go to the next area, which is devising the plan. So we have the kids look at it and say to themselves, you know, "I look for this pattern. What is it that I see and notice? Is there maybe a technique that I can apply that I've done before with a previous problem?" It's in this area that the decision needs to be made of what kind of problem-solving strategy should I use? Should I consider making a table or graph? Should I maybe work backwards on the problem? Draw a picture, simplify it, sometimes even going as far as taking manipulatives out and saying, "What kind of objects can I use in order to solve this problem?" Reading and understanding the problem as well as devising a plan are all done before we can even start to engage in solving the problem. Once that's been done, then we can actively engage, which would bring us into the third area, which is carrying out the plan. This is the time that the strategy is implemented. And it's the one that you've decided previously on using and perform any necessary actions or computation. It's at this point that teachers continue to model for the students, showing them how we could check each step along the way, also making sure we keep an accurate record so that we can always go back if we need to check it over, check over our work. If the plan isn't working, just like any kind of plan, even outside of math, it's okay to change it. You can go back and change things up. It's crucial during the third step of carrying out the plan that students persevere. This is the point in time where we sometimes hear the, "I just can't do this," which is why we have implemented Growth Mindset, which I will talk about in just a little bit. The final and fourth area is to look back. This is the last area. And it's important that students see the significance of this in interpreting the in interpreting the solution. They need to go back and say to themselves, "Does my answer really make sense? If not, what can I do? I can go back, I can review it, and look over the work. If it makes sense, it's a really good time to even go back and say, 'Was it efficient the way I did it? Was it an effective method? Is there maybe another way that I could do this that would make more sense or maybe be more efficient next time?'" When we are teaching our students to make sense of problems and persevere in them, we as teachers, we start to shift from that role of answering questions to more or less being a facilitator, and we want the kids to be the ones to ask questions and to think and not have us just give them the answers. We choose our words wisely so that what we're doing is we're creating students who are motivated versus being self-defeated. And this is one of the reasons why we implemented growth mindset in our building. So in a growth mindset, people believe that their most basic abilities can be developed through dedication and hard work. This view creates a love of learning and motivation and productivity in our students. So as part of our school improvement plan, our A-CAP facilitator, David Zazinski, he's gone to all the classrooms, and he did lessons about growth mindset. And specifically, he was looking at it in regards to embracing struggle and challenge in perseverance when you come across a mathematical problem that you're struggling with. Growth mindset instruction has helped change the way our students think when they begin the four steps in problem solving. We no longer tend to hear, "This is too hard," or "I give up," or "Plan A didn't work." But instead, we hear things like, "This may take more time and effort. I will use some of the strategies we've learned," or "Good thing the alphabet has 25 letters." In conclusion, we have always had strengths in the area of our students having a solid foundation in basic mathematical skills, which is something that Brandy had pointed out. With our concentrated efforts toward our school improvement goal in recent years on perseverance in mathematical reasoning and problem solving, along with the implementation of the growth mindset, we've noticed improved skills in mathematical reasoning and students' ability to explain their reasoning with greater detail, as well as an improvement in their perseverance, and they're not giving up.
So let's ask this guy what he thinks about a growth mindset and see what he says.
What does it mean to have a growth mindset?
It means to be like open-minded to anything. If you come across like a challenge, not just say like, "Oh, I can't do it," but just think how you can improve if you're not already great.
He is pretty great. And now you're going to hear from our literacy facilitator about our reading and writing goals, Ms. Rebecca Gess.
Thanks. So just as we've heard from pretty much everyone else at this table, when we're thinking about school improvement, the first step is finding the areas that we need to improve. And so we, our students in the A-CAP program come pretty advanced in reading, all of them reading above grade level when they come to us. And so sometimes it can feel like there's not as much room for growth, or how are we going to challenge them? And we decided that for our school improvement task, we would focus on nonfiction. And our goal has not changed over the past several years, but this year, we really decided to change the task. We've been kind of going year by year and every year kind of finding that we needed to tweak it and change it, and then that made it more and more difficult to compare our data, and we really wanted something that could stand the test of time, that we could see growth from year to year and compare. So one of the things that our district, the curriculum department has provided all buildings with is this Writing Pathways book, and as a literacy leader, we've been really looking at it quite a bit. And there's one chapter, this book is specifically committed to writing, but as I was considering our school improvement goals and which way we should go, I was really hoping to find something that we could put reading and writing together, because that really felt like the most authentic way for our kids to be assessed, because mostly, when you read and then you're responding to that reading, that's a real-world task. It's something that kids will be asked to do in high school, in college, and as you go on. We wanted that task to be something that felt relevant to the real world. So there was one chapter in here that addressed a reading and writing assessment and directed anyone interested in that to go to the Teachers College website. And so what we did is we took a look at the assessments that were there and kind of held them up to some of our criteria. So one was, it had to feel like a challenge. We wanted something that would make sense for some of the other assessments that they would be doing. So we wanted something that integrated more than one source, because more and more kids are being asked to integrate information from two or more sources and from sources that are different from one another, so a text and a video or an audio clip or something like that. And we also really wanted to focus on a science topic, just because we also need to cover that base. We wanted to do that. And so we were able to find those things. Each task has a science or health focus, and the rubrics that are used to assess these tasks are almost identical to the rubrics in the Writing Pathway, which are the same rubrics that we're more and more beginning to use in our classroom in combination with our MACE units. And the other thing that was really important was that we didn't want to give teachers another thing to do. We wanted school improvement to really be a way to assess how our kids are taking in the teaching that's just happening in our classrooms. And so the tasks that they're being asked to do are right in line with the MACE units that we're already doing, the reading and the writing units that we're already doing. So it's not another thing for teachers to do, like a separate school improvement topic. So that was a really important thing. And also, we really wanted something that could help our fifth and sixth-grade teachers show reading growth or student growth that was outside of the Fontes and Pennell, because we have many kids entering fifth and sixth grade at a level X or above. So the way that these tasks are set up, we are using them as an end-of-the-year assessment with a proficiency score, but the fifth and sixth-grade tasks have like practice tasks, so they're able to do a pre-assessment and a post-assessment that's really helpful in showing student growth. So that's also kind of a bonus. And then the other thing is that, the other thing is that they, they, actually, I think I already said that. Yeah, we just wanted it to really fit in with what we were already doing, and it really does that. And we're really just kind of looking forward to seeing how the kids do with this, and we feel like these are tasks that we're able to use year after year until we feel like we're ready to set a new goal.
And Ms. Kathy Frame is one of our Family Three teachers, is a part of our leadership team, and really is expert in strategies that we use within our school improvement plan in terms of using graphic organizers and formative assessment. So she's going to talk to us a little bit about our journey to get there and then move into that part.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening. As Rebecca previously mentioned, and I think we've all mentioned this, one of the big things is our kids come with a good skill set as they come into our school. And so one of the things that we looked at in our journey when we started to read the book Focus was how do we really look at what our students need? And we, as part of our leadership team, we read the book by Smoker, and we decided that we needed to focus on three essential pieces to focus our curriculum as well as target our instruction. Looking at what would be a reasonable coherent curriculum, so looking at power standards, what are the key things that we need to focus on for our students, focusing on depth versus breadth of the curriculum, looking at intellectual thinking skills, argumentative thinking skills, how do we reconcile opposing viewpoints, and authentic literacy, as Rebecca said, you know, real purposeful reading and writing and discussion as our primary modes of learning both content and thinking skills. So one of the focuses there in our school improvement goals was nonfiction literacy, and this is where we thought we could really capture the formative assessment piece, also looking at note-taking skills and graphic organizer usage. And that became the big focus of our curriculum for reading and writing across the content standards. Because literacy, as one of my students said the other day, is a spine, and it holds everything together. And so if you're not a strong reader and writer, all the rest of the curriculum's going to have a weak spine. And I thought was pretty proficient for a nine-year-old. So we decided that that would be a big focus, and to help target and focus our classroom instruction, obviously, if we're going to have formative assessment, we have to have learning objectives, and the kids need to know what they are. Modeling and teaching that so that we're demonstrating what we want kids to be able to do, and they have a clear focus of how to get there. We practice through a variety of gradual release of responsibility models, guided practice, and then checking for understanding. So that's where the formative assessment piece comes, to assess what's going on on a daily basis for learning. So the ongoing formative assessment practice allows teachers to see what needs to be clarified or explained in a different way. When do we slow down? When can we speed up? When can we skip a lesson because our students really don't need that piece? When can we expand the thinking of a concept that we can go deeper here? So our formative assessment pieces might, just that there's many of them, but some things we do would be circulating around the room and observing what kids are doing with us, listening in on when we ask kids to turn and talk, what are they saying, calling on students randomly so that we're not just calling on kids who are raising their hands, having students signal for us, thumbs up, thumbs down, using a traffic light system, green is go, yellow is I think I need more time, red is stop, I don't understand what's happening. Three, two, one, three things that you learned today, two new questions that you possibly have, maybe one thing that interests you. As David said, we do exit slips. Sometimes we do entrance slips to review what we did the day before to make that curriculum connection to what we did yesterday and how that links to what we're doing today. Having students hold up dry eraser boards so that we can quickly scan the class and see, "Do you understand what we just talked about? Show me some evidence of your thinking." So one of the things that we talked also about previously was the Common Core. And one of the things we thought about when we looked at power standards is what are the big language shifts that come with the Common Core? And one of it is that kids have to be reading really complex texts, maybe texts that they hadn't read before. And so one of the things that we do push kids is to really raise the bar for text complexity. And that also goes with academic vocabulary, so vocabulary that they might see across the curriculum. Reading and writing that's grounded in evidence from text, both in literary as well as informational. So rather than asking kids to solely answer from prior knowledge and experience the standards, call for us to answer questions that depend on having read the text with care, require them to do close and critical reading, often rereading, which students don't like to do but need to. Reading standards that focus on their ability to read carefully, grasp information, pull an argument out of the text, and be able to defend it with evidence and details that go back to the text and have it text-dependent. And building knowledge through content-rich information that comes from informational text, because one of the other things with the Common Core is that 50/50 should be our goal. We should have 50% of the reading instruction happening in nonfiction, and that's a big switch for us in terms of what we were doing in classrooms prior to the Common Core. So one reason that we felt reading nonfiction was so important and that it had to be really a big part of our school improvement process is that it helps students develop their background knowledge. And the background knowledge that they have becomes crucial as they rise up into the later elementary grades, middle school, high school, and beyond, because they're going to be reading much more textbooks, non-information articles, listening to speeches, as Rebecca said, you know, hearing audio clips, and they're going to be looking at headings, graphs, charts, tables, information that's presented in a lot of ways other than just in regular textual print. So thinking about Smoker, kind of going back to that, we decided that this was kind of like a three-part process, that we had kids close-reading, underlining, and annotating texts, discussing texts as much as possible, no matter where they were in the curriculum. If they were studying science, they were reading science texts. Same way with social studies and other areas that we were focusing on as our curriculum. Writing about text by close-reading, discussion, and annotation using graphic organizers, and that's where that piece came in, play as a strategy that we encompass in our plan and in our daily practices with students. So one of the things that we found is that graphic organizers really guide learnings for the students' thinking as they fill in and build a visual map, and really mind-mapping or diagramming their thinking from either reading or from class discussions or short interactive lectures. And they're probably the most visual, effective way that us kids can pull out what are the key details across the curriculum and enhance learning and understanding of the subject matter. So we took this approach that they'd walk away with strategies that could be held as lifelong reminders, something they could take with them. We're going to show them a way to extrapolate what they want. We want them to get out of a text or of a lecture on a format like a graphic organizer, but hopefully, they're going to be strengthening those muscles so that they can do that on a piece of paper later, that they see that visual map in their mind and they're able to put that down on a piece of paper as they go into eighth-grade science and 10th-grade ELA and so on. So in using some of these graphic organizers, we had a clip of some students in Family Three that talked to you about their experiences in using graphic organizers in the classroom.
This is an example of a graphic organizer I use to organize information. We used it in social studies class when we were gathering information about Christopher Columbus, about how his actions of exploration affected other people, for example, the Native Americans and also the Europeans. We collected this information in a graphic organizer, and then we used it to help collect evidence so that when we debated on whether he was a good or evil person, we had evidence to back our responses.
And this little guy that we'll hear from is a big guy now, and he's been at this a while with using the strategies within our school improvement plan. And out of the mouths of Babe, Danny tells us.
So in all subjects, I really utilize graphic organizers in many different ways than I have been since Family Two. And in writing, I use graphic organizers such as this, except I write it out, and it helps me divide up what paragraphs, if I'm writing an essay, what details go in what paragraphs and my introduction and my conclusions. And then in reading, it helps me when, like in our book partnerships, where I would divide up areas for each area that I write, such as connections, predictions, and the questions that I had in a story. In the social studies, I use graphic organizers like these all the time. And the ones that Miss Frame, my teacher fills out for us, is key to help me study because it organizes it in a way where it's easy for me to see what part's which. And also, in the ones that I make, like this one, it helps me reflect on like the things that I've learned and how to divide it up. So if I'm taking a test or anything like that, I can go right back to this and study.
So one more thing, we really hope that for our students, that we want them, as Danny said, to own the method. said, to own the method that speaks to them. So it cements the learning of the text and offers them success and growth in their reading. So we're really happy when we see students that, you know, unscripted and we say, what does this graphic organizer process and strategy mean to you? That you can tell that these students are owning these strategies, so makes our hearts happy.
And now you're going to get to hear about our Act 18 math goal.
Okay, so for our Act 18 math goal, what we wanted to focus on this year is we wanted to increase our parent involvement. We wanted to increase that in any way that we could. And we wanted to also make those real problem-solving experiences for our students that we know are so important. So this year, our classrooms continue to use our school store that we have been using in our Act 18 program. So the teachers use it a little bit differently, but it involves principals from positive behavior support, also some of our leader-in-me initiatives, where our students can earn dollars for certain selective behaviors. And once a week, they get to go shopping in our school store. And this involves a variety of skills that are very functional problems for our students. They get to open up their wallet, they have to count out money, they have to wait for someone to tell them how much an item is, they have to wait to get their change. All of these are skills that we saw our students really needed and consistent practice with. And it was a very functional way for them to do that. We have a parent that runs our store, which is the way we were able to bring that parent involvement in this year. And a couple other things that we put in place that we were proud of this year is just our commitment as teachers to incorporate what our goals are in our newsletter, ways that parents, our parents could at home, practice problem-solving with their kids. What are the essential elements this month that we're working on? How could you do that with your child at home? And one of those pictures up there is a student that we were working on heated edition, and that was the problem that they did at home. And that was a way that they were able to bring that for him. So we have a little video clip to share of one of our students shopping in our weekly store.
Okay, so you have two, three dollars, please. Give your money. Give your money. Right here, sweetie. Three dollars, please. Counting. Okay. Your items. Thank you for shopping. See you Friday.
We extend, you know, we do community-based instruction as well a few different times a year to really, these things that we're working on to kind of take it a button behind what we're doing weekly and give them that same experience in a very functional, very real way. And we've just seen a lot of great things in our kids. We've seen that generalize and we're hoping the store to continue to build on that for our students, so.
My name is Laura Hershman. I'm one of the other ASD teachers in our Act 18 program. Our Act 18 reading goal was that students would be able to identify the main idea from a social studies text. And because our population of students have some pretty significant communication challenges, we had to be creative about our students identifying the main idea in non-traditional ways. So some of the things that we use are picture choices available to the kids. So after they've heard a story, they can point to the picture that shows what the story was about. For some students that don't really recognize the pictures, we might use actual objects. We have amazing technology that we can use, voice output devices. So if we ask the student, what was the story about? What was the story about? They could push the button, it would say, oh, it was about apples. And even though this goal, we related to the social studies area, it's something that in our classrooms, we practice daily, finding the main idea about any information that's presented. And that will be a life skill for all of our students. Our writing goal was to contribute a piece of writing, or to contribute to a piece of writing, that the students would be able to show an understanding of a science topic. And we use some of the same tools as we did in our reading goal, such as multiple choices, picture choices, visual menus. For our students that can't come up with an idea on their own, they have some choices, some visuals to choose from. So in that picture, that student was writing an opinion about the science topic of penguins. And it says, I think penguins are cute because they are soft. So what happened, the way that the student composed that is, we had the beginning sentence starter, that I think penguins are. So they were able, from multiple choices, to choose how they, what they thought about the penguin, filled it in, and then were able to take it a step further. What did they learn from that text that supports their opinion because they are soft? So again, even though the goal was a science topic to form an opinion about, students that have the opportunity in our classrooms to write about their opinions and about their experiences across all curriculum areas and including those community-based instructions that, outings that Katrina mentioned, field trips, cooking, assemblies, because for our students, anything that we're teaching now, we want to be a life skill. And forming and expressing an opinion about something like our writing goal is a skill that they will use for life.
So you've gotten to hear about both programs' school improvement goals, but we didn't want to not tell you about the efforts that we are, have in place towards our school climate, because it's a big part of who we are too. So I am excited to introduce you to Natalie Chakely and Stephen Pascoe, who are teachers in our A-CAT program that are going to talk to you about our school at Webster's school climate.
Good evening, everyone. So our mission here at Webster is to provide a safe and thriving learning environment for each one of our students. We pride ourselves in knowing that our students will leave our school empowered to think clearly, care deeply, and act wisely. And we want each one of our students to feel safe and engaged here at school. This is only my first year here at Webster as a full-time teacher, and I can tell you that I see examples of this every day, be it students working together on a project in the halls, or teachers sharing lessons, ideas, lesson ideas with each other. We will make sure all of our students will feel emotionally safe in school. We want to work with our students and their parents to help them gain the skills and strategies that help them to respond effectively to interactions with others, not only with other students, but with the adults as well. Here at Webster, we use the seven habits as a foundation to teach these important values to our students. We had the pleasure of having two students from Cooper Elementary come to our school and present their binders to our students, their leadership binders. And our students were interested in having binders of their own. In my class, I started leader-in-me binders to help students keep track of all of their goals, to keep track of work that they're really proud of, and to graph all of their reading that they complete. Here at Webster, we challenge our students to be the best that they can be and put more responsibility on them. So Stephen's going to talk a little bit more about how we focus on those specific interactions.
Thank you. Good evening. As it reads, by the end of the 2016-2017 school year, LaVonia Public Schools in Webster will have school and classroom communities that display mutually respectful interactions. Focus encompasses adults to students, adults to adults, and students to students. I chose to focus first on the adults-to-adults interactions as they align with district climate goals. They include respectful interactions. They also include professional attitudes. And these are modeled by our adults in the building so that students are witnessing and learning from the choices we make and how we treat each other. We also encourage parent involvement in school-wide activities as well as classroom activities. We, as a staff, keep consistent contact with our families in our classrooms to keep them updated, whether that's through classroom websites or through weekly newsletters, through email. We understand communication is key in maintaining positive, mutually respectful relationships. I then went on to and would like to talk about adult-to-student interactions. It's our mission that every student here feels safe, welcome, and valued. Students are treated with respect by adults and are encouraged and motivated to be the best that they can be. We focus on positive behavior supports, and all of the staff here works together to ensure that each child's needs are being met and that they're presented with opportunities to be both challenged and successful. And finally, student-to-student interactions. Through the implementation of many aspects of the leader-in-me program, here at Webster, students are taught and given opportunities to practice the seven habits of the highly effective person. Not only are students given the chance to synergize and work together on a daily basis within their own classrooms, but students are also offered the opportunity to interact and partner with students in classrooms in the Act 18 program. The A-CAT Act 18 program partnership allows students to mentor and work with other students on a regular basis that they otherwise may only be seeing in passing times in the hallways here at Webster. So this is also my first year at the school and I am privileged to be a part of the Webster family. Our school exhibits and displays an atmosphere of respect across all phases of our day-to-day interactions.
So we wanted to share with you at the end how this all comes alive here. These two unique programs that we got to hear about and how we try to make sure that they complement each other. This is an example of our Act 18 students' video modeling for our, did I say that? A-CAT students' video modeling for our Act 18 students. And what video modeling is, is we use it quite a bit. So peers will show an example of an appropriate behavior, or Act 18 students watch this interaction and then they practice it themselves. So they're practicing how to do a friendly greeting. Again, they're seeing their friends that they're with on the playground and in the lunchroom exhibiting this appropriate greeting so that they can then replicate that when they interact with others. So this is an example of that. This is led by our support staff, too, our teachers of speech and language, help our students with this. And the students that get to be these video models are rock stars and they think they are in their head, too.
Hi.
Hi.
So they show an example of how to do it the right way. And then something magical that happens frequently is we have reading buddies. And this is an example of a reading buddy partnership that happens. They also are party buddies and other opportunities for engagement with each other. But it is a perfect example of, here at Webster, how we do think clearly and care deeply and act wisely. So you'll see these buddies spending some time reading. So we have had a lot to share with you tonight because we have a lot to be proud of here at Webster. So we appreciate you spending time with us and learning more about our school and hopefully you have a takeaway of something that you didn't realize was happening within these magical walls here. But thank you so much for the opportunity to have our school and for us to get to share with you how proud we are of the work that we do.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Thank you again, Webster's Dan.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Johnson.
Just a comment.
You didn't ring back.
Just a comment with regard to the, that last area, the Webster School climate. Mr. Simmons, myself, and Mrs. Jarvis are all part of the district school improvement team. And over the last few years, that has been our focus. And it's really sort of cool to see what we've been working on integrated into the schools and you picked up on it. It just shows how we go from one concept and integrate it into the schools and how well that works. And we really appreciate the work you've put in on that area. Thanks.
Anyone else? You certainly have something to be really proud of. I want to thank you again for your excellent presentation and for spending time this evening with us. And before we go on with our agenda, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meetings. We do understand that you would probably want to have some time this evening with your family to review lesson plans, to correct papers, and to get ready for another exciting day. So please feel free at this point if you'd like to leave. Thank you again. Okay, we're going to go on with our agenda. The agenda reads, Item 2, Curriculum Committee, and, oh no, I'm sorry. Before we go on, we have a part of Curriculum Committee, the Focus Schools Quarterly Report. And Mrs. Ellis.
Thank you very much again, Mrs. Laura. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's Focus School presentation is one of four that we are required to present to our Board of Education about the efforts in our district to reduce our achievement gaps. And so I just want to share a little bit of background information about Focus Schools, just briefly, that Focus Schools are schools in the state that have a large achievement gap between the top 30% of students in their school and the bottom 30% of the students in their school, based on the results of the state assessment. Focus Schools may very likely have an overall high achievement of their students, but they still have a large gap between the top performing students and the bottom performing students, which may indicate then that the school is struggling to meet the needs of the students in the bottom 30%, which is why our Focus School reports then focus on what our schools are doing to reduce their achievement gaps. So tonight is the second of four presentations on our Focus School efforts. As we've done in the past, the Focus School report will be uploaded to the state's website after tonight's presentation. In addition, copies will be made available to Superintendent Oakwist so that she can include them in your board update at the end of the week. So rather than reading this entire report to you, I am just going to summarize some key pieces of it tonight. So what I'm going to do this evening is share with you the required content that's in the report that covers the actions that occurred in our schools from December through the end of February. And we're going to cover the diagnostic data dialogues. I'm going to give you an example of one of those at each of our three Focus Schools, which are Garfield Elementary School, Churchill High School, and Franklin High School. So I'm going to give you an example of a data dialogue that occurred. And then I'm going to give you an example or two of the teaching and learning priorities that were identified as a result of those data dialogues. So I'm going to begin at Garfield. Garfield held weekly Title I meetings to review their Title I referrals, the student progress that was occurring, grouping and programming. Student learning levels and interventions were evaluated on a weekly basis, and then they made adjustments to the interventions and they made changes on students that were receiving those interventions based on student need, based on the data that they had and teacher input. At Churchill High School, all of the content area teachers reviewed the results of their first semester finals. They determined strategies that would influence more effective instruction during second semester. At Franklin High School, the administrative staff, content area, and special education department chairs, their school improvement chairs and counselors reviewed their initial M-step results with a focus on the students who performed at a non-proficient level. They are continuing to analyze what can be done to positively impact that performance, and they are committed to identifying what's not proving to be effective and then make changes to initiate new efforts to, that would be worthy of implementation. There are many more examples of data dialogues in your report, but I'm just, I just captured a few of those this evening. I'm going to move on to the teaching and learning priorities. And again, I'm going to share with you one or two of them that have been established at each of the schools. But again, many, many more of them are included in this report. So at Garfield, all students are participating in iReady monthly progress monitoring checks. This is our new assessment tool that we have, our iReady Diagnostic Assessment. It has a progress monitoring tool. And so they are monitoring students' performance in reading and math on a monthly basis. And then based on the results, they are having students participate in the online iReady lessons, which are individualized for each student, and they're targeted at their instructional need based on both reading and mathematics. Additionally, a variety of Tier 2 academic interventions are being provided throughout the school day, including the leveled literacy initiative for reading comprehension, Fast Forward, which is designed to improve language improvement and reading skills. Forward, which is designed to improve language improvement and reading skills, Touch Math and Fast Math for developing basic math fluency, and RASD Kids, which is an interactive online e-reading program. At Churchill High School, the staff has been busily preparing students for the SAT, which has resulted in staffs working collaboratively to integrate reading and writing skills into their classes. They're also focusing, continuing to focus on the African-American male youth promise initiative, which focuses on closing the achievement gap of African-American males within their schools. And at Franklin High School, the school has developed a new character development team. That team has selected nine character traits that teachers feel are important to emphasize in their classes, and they are going to hold students accountable for exhibiting those skills. And the goal is to have a list of those character traits posted in every single classroom. They're also continuing to focus at Franklin on their new vocabulary initiative that they started this year. Each department has identified keywords that they believe are important in the courses that they teach, and they are posting those keywords in their classrooms, using those keywords in their lessons and in student responses with the goal of creating a print-rich environment and a language-rich environment in their classes. So that's just some of the many data dialogues and teaching and learning priorities that our schools, our Focus Schools have identified and are working towards from February through, I'm sorry, from December through the end of February. There are two more presentations on our Focus Schools scheduled for later this school year. The next one will occur in June, and I'll come to you with a summary of what has occurred in our Focus Schools through the month of March, April, and May. And so that concludes tonight's brief Focus School quarterly report presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Mrs. Ellis, thank you again for your excellent and informative quarterly report. And we'll be looking forward to hearing from you in June for another one.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
That concludes our curriculum committee reports. Our agenda for item three is building in sight. We had one item, LMC lighting, and that has been removed from our agenda for tonight. So we'll move on to item four, finance committee. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Tonight, the finance committee is going to consider two issues. The first is the review of the 2015-2016 budget amendment number two. Can you say it?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. We are here, as we do almost every year in March, when we bring forward the second budget amendment. As you know, we put together our budget in the spring. That budget is approved by the Board of Education by June 30th of each year. And then during the school year, as there are changes in our projections, our estimates for the year, we bring those budget amendments to you. That is to keep the Board of Education informed on what our targets are and how close we are to those targets and to make amendments or changes to that budget as necessary. So again, we usually bring those to you at least three times per year. Of course, if there's anything extremely important that happened during the year that would change our projections, even if it wasn't time to amend the budget, we would certainly inform the Board of Education. So this may not be the only time you hear about things relative to financial issues, but this is our formal process to have the Board of Education update the budget. So with that, you did get in your packet last week a very long memo explaining all of the changes in this budget amendment. And as I always mention, while we have thousands and thousands of line items, and while we may see some major changes in the budget, sometimes it's just a couple of items that actually are making the overall changes, and you'll see that specifically this evening. So we might have changes in 30 line items for salary, but when we talk about this this evening, you'll see there's a very net overall change in salaries in this budget amendment. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started with some of the detail. You have the general fund budget summary sheet that I provided to the Board of Education that I tried to get to each amendment that just summarizes where we are and the changes. And I think it's a good format to go through from a big picture, and then we'll get into some of the details. So if you have that in your packet, we look at column B, that was our first amendment back in the fall. And tonight's activity is in columns C and D. Column C is the second budget amendment. And you can see that we have the beginning fund balance of 4.2 million, the same as the first amendment. We're projecting revenues of 144.8 million. That's a $3.3 million increase, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. Expenditures, 144.9 million dollars, or just under $1,900,000 increase in this amendment for a projected net deficit. In other words, our expenditures exceed our revenues by just $167,000. So from a big picture, let me go through the revenue changes of 3.3 million. As I indicated in my memo to you, the most of this is a result of changes in the 147(c) retirement estimate. So I know you are all proficient in 147(c), but I'll just remind you that this is the amount of money that we get from the state of Michigan that is revenues into our fund and then expenditures out, and they call it for unfunded liability in our pension fund. So this number has grown from about 1 million several years ago to over $10 million this year. So in very layman's terms, what the state is doing is they're providing to districts across the state money that comes into the district as a revenue source and then goes out as expenditure to the state retirement system. And what's that doing across the state is helping to shore up the unfunded pension liability. So we've all heard for many, many years about pension problems, whether it's in municipalities, in other governments, in other school districts, not just in Michigan but across the country. This is a way for the state of Michigan to provide resources to help with that pension system. So as we've talked about here before, that's a very good thing to help our pension system. But it's also a lot of resources that is coming from the school aid fund that isn't getting into our district for our general fund purpose of expenditures in other areas of the budget. So that number is just about 2 point, almost 2.5 million dollars. And then that will be offset by increase in expenditures as well because of that increase in retirement costs of about 1.5 million dollars. So that's the biggest piece of that increase of the 3.3 million dollars, and I'll go through that again in a second. The other big piece, if you look below, under transfers and other, $850,000 increase in this budget. And as we had mentioned in our study session, we are pleased in this budget that we are getting additional funds from our ACT-18 program to reimburse the district for transportation of special education students. So we're very pleased to bring that forward. That does increase our fund balance. It helps us significantly for this year. We have been advised by RISA right now that unfortunately that is a one-time revenue for the 15-16 school year. Having said that, we're certainly, the superintendents are lobbying RISA for, to continue on that practice, finding resources to help us with our transportation costs, or perhaps look at other ways in which to help districts in their general fund. So we'll keep you apprised on how that will affect next year's budget. Of course, when I update some of those estimates for next year's budget, that will be one of those one-time revenues I'll have to take out of the budget because right now, as it stands, it only affects the current 15-16 budget. So that, those two big items are where we make up the 3.3 million dollars in increased revenues. In the changes in expenditures, you'll see in the bottom part of this sheet, there are several line items. Again, salaries, a net of about $176,000 reduction in salaries, very, very minor change. As you can see, our overall salaries in the general fund are almost $81 million. So that's just a very, very small change, although it is over multiple line items. Part of that change, just so you know, is that we have been able to use some of our grants and other resources outside of the general fund for some of our special aid costs this year, and we'll evaluate that and see whether that can continue for next year as well. Of course, it always depends on the funding of those sources, whether it's in our ACT-18 program or whether it's in our funded programs federally or other grant-funded programs. The benefit increase you're seeing there of 1.6 million, of course, is that offset increase in retirement costs for that unfunded liability or 147(c) or UAAL. It's all the same. It has all those different acronyms that you'll hear around. Purchase services primarily is our utilities. As you can guess, we've had a very nice winter. We've made some estimates and projection in our utility cost to reduce them. I still think we're a little conservative, especially based on the way this week is going right now, that we may see some additional adjustments in that budget in our final or June amendment. That's just my crystal ball for today. I hope I didn't jinx it by saying that. The supply of 167,000 is generally fuel for our transportation, for our buses, and for our maintenance vehicles. So that's another one where I'm, you know, depending on how gas prices and diesel prices stay, that we might anticipate that one changing in June as well. So we look forward to that. I hope that's true. And then the other line item, 183,600 reduction in expenditures really is primarily tax refunds or tax write-offs, as you've also heard them. So those are property taxes that we need to refund. Again, that's probably a conservative number as well. We really don't know that final number until year end, but we have been seeing a trend of that declining, as I've mentioned. It really had a sharp incline during the bad economic years and as property values changed and as people were looking for tax refunds based on that, and just as property values fell and people didn't pay their taxes, there were a lot of tax refunds to be made. But that trend is changing, and we're beginning to reflect that in our budget as well. So I'm just going to stop and ask any big picture questions and then go into some of that detail that I provided on the second page.
Any questions? Mrs. Abbe?
Mrs. Abby, so for this amendment, salaries and benefits out of our 145 million dollars is about 131 million?
Yes, correct.
And the remainder of the budget to run the buildings, the supplies, textbooks, transportation is part of that 14 million dollars?
Correct.
And do you know how much of that 14 million dollars is mandated expense?
So, for example, a good chunk of it, it's not all mandated, but most of it is required. So for example, when we talk about transportation, it may not be mandated by law that we provide general fund transportation, but about half of those costs are special education, and those are mandated. If we're going to have buildings and run them, we have to maintain them. We do have to have custodial supplies. We do have to have the utilities up and running. So while not necessarily required by law, they're certainly required. So most of the budget, very little of the budget is discretionary in terms of supplies. So even a big chunk of that supply budget, you think of that, that's because even if you said, okay, we won't have teaching supplies, we still must have custodial supplies. We still must have fuel, those kinds of things. So there's very little that I would call discretionary in this budget in terms of what we could spend money on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, those charts, and this will be in your packet this week, but you can see, you know, each time we provide those charts for you on salaries and benefits and purchase services and those percentages. And we, you know, generally are around 89, 90, 91% of our budget expenditures are salary and benefits.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
As far as expenditures, we're halfway through now this fiscal year. I know you're starting to look forward a little bit to next fiscal year. What are these revenue and expenditures? What do you suggest that they're going to look like next year?
Oh, much, much better. Well, we, as you know, we had some discussion about next year's budget. And a couple of things just to keep in mind on those revenues of that 144.8 million. So we talked about the 850,000, that was one-time resources from RISA. You'll also recall that there's 1.9 million dollars of one-time revenue in that budget this year. That's the sale of property. So that's the sale of the two land parcels as well as the lease on the Stevenson High School cell tower. So, you know, as we talk about that, of course, we have to adjust next year's budget for that amount. When we looked at some of those estimates and we provided the board with some scenarios going forward of, based on what we know right now, which is only the executive budget or the governor's budget, there was some good news in terms of potentially a foundation allowance increase. That was some good news. The good news is the retirement rate is down about three quarters of a percentage point. And unfortunately, the bad side of the news, of course, is that we continue to see some enrollment issues and trends as we move forward. We are, of course, in the middle of our enrollment analysis right now too with Plant Moran, so we'll certainly have an update with the board on that in the near future. Hopefully, the trends are beginning to change, but we will find that out as we move forward. And so we will definitely see some decreases in revenues and then normal increases in expenditures, just based on the fact that fuel prices might go up, et cetera. Property casualty insurance, certainly our health and welfare fund, and those expenditures is, as you know, although there is a cap, we would anticipate somewhere between 2.5% to a 3% increase in our health care. That's, you know, part of our overall health care that we provide to all of our employees for health, dental, vision, life, and other benefits. We have made one pass with the Board of Education on an anticipated budget for next year based on some of the best and worst-case scenarios, and I think with these numbers, we'll continue to update that. I mean, you know, clearly we feel good about where we are with utilities and fuel this year, but, you know, we have to make some broad assumptions about next year as well and make sure that we're conservative with those assumptions, as we've talked about. Very pleased with the fund balance that we're looking at and this change to a 4.1 million dollar fund balance, but I'll also mention that it still is a 2.85% fund balance. So this is very good for Levonia Public Schools, and it really provides us a little bit of breathing room as we move forward for the remainder of the year and as we plan for next year. But just to remind you that when we looked at next year's budget, we were talking about some very significant deficits and started to just very broadly have some discussions about how to meet those obligations for next year. So this helps. Doesn't solve it, but it certainly helps it.
Thank you.
The, oh.
Thank you. On the 853,000 reimbursement from RISA, that's from ACT-18 transportation expenses. Are we limited to how we use that revenue? Is it limited to ACT-18?
No. That's the very good news about that, is that it can go into our general fund to, because the general fund pays for all of those expenses, so it's reimbursing for all of those transportation expenses. So while generally our ACT-18 program is cost-neutral in terms of, for example, running the program that's here at Webster, for all of those educational purposes, our actual transportation costs are not covered. So it's not just, it's just, it's all of the special aid kits, not just the ACT-18.
Well, that's the next.
Yeah.
Great news.
So the second page, I just wanted to provide that is sort of a big picture because when you see those very large changes, again, it is just really reflective of a very few items. So the changes in revenue, again, is primarily 2.2 million in the mandated retirement, the transportation refund. We do have a small increase in what we anticipating for ACT-18, or excuse me, at-risk. I've said that so many times tonight. At-risk revenue or state aid, those totaling 3.3 million dollars. Again, you know, primarily that's two line items. Our changes in expenditures, just so you could see it another way and see that breakout, retirement costs, the salaries and benefits combined, utilities, fuel, tax refunds, and then other, net of all of our other line items and expenditures. So that net of those changes in revenue is why the fund balance is going up 2.4 million. Again, the net of that retirement, 650,000 dollars, the transportation, 856,000 dollars, at-risk and other small revenue items, 247,000 dollars, and then netting all of those expenditures, 638,000 dollars of savings. So that 2.396 change in fund balance really is a summary of those four aggregate items. So although, again, Allison and Nick spend a tremendous amount of time going through every single line item for not just the general fund but all of the other funds as well, it really is, comes down, the changes come down to a couple of very major items. So with that, we would, number one, get your budget book with more detail, if you'd like it, in your packet this week, and then put this on the agenda for our regular voting meeting, which is, I think, the 21st. Is that correct? Is that correct? So again, that provides an opportunity with some time if anyone has questions during the interim period as well.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to the second item under the Finance Committee. 2015/2016 Auditor Continuation Recommendation.
Thank you. As you know, the school district and all other government organizations are required annually to have an independent audit done. This is required by both the Michigan Department of Education, the State of Michigan, as well as the federal government. We have appointed an auditor each year to conduct that, and as you know, Plant Moran has been our auditor for the last four years. I'll provide you just a little bit of background. We have had a couple of bids in the last several years, and you have that detailed in your packet this evening. For the 2009 through 2011, we went out for a bid. At that time, we had appointed Yo and Yo as the auditors. As you may recall, when we presented it to the Board of Education, we had a very long RFP process with a five-page questionnaire that had about five different areas that we were looking at, about 20 different items as we were looking for an auditor. In summary, there are several areas. First of all, the auditing firm has to be very well-versed in Michigan. Auditing and accounting procedures are accounting manual and requirements. They also have to be proficient in federal audits as well, work well in a large environment, which is Livonia Public Schools, and have a broad and depth of expertise within the firm itself. In addition, some of the other things that we look for as we look for an auditor is a firm that provides other services as well, not just to come in and do the audit for two weeks in the summer and help us put together the financial statements, but also throughout the year, provide us with accounting updates, auditing updates, financial information as we need it. For example, when we sold the 2013 bond, that is one of those things where they were very helpful in helping us go through, you know, what is, how do we put that on our books? How's that going to look? You know, this is a once-in-a-ten-year thing that something, someone in our office would do, and you have to make sure that we're, what are the latest laws? What are the latest rules? What are the latest compliance? That's a sort of outside of their role as an auditor that they assist us with. So we looked at that, certainly felt that Yo and Yo could meet those requirements, the board, and so we used them. And we also went out for bid again in 2012. At that time, the board did appoint Plant Moran. Each of those, during each of those periods, Plant Moran had, both firms had scored very high on the overall assessment. Last year, in 2015, Plant Moran did keep their fee flat for that year, so they didn't increase it at all. And this year, they have requested a $1,000 increase, which is a very minor increase with the CPI. So that's going from $42,500 to $43,500. We are recommending in the business office that we maintain Plant Moran. They have come on in the time that we started our overall bond process. We are really hoping to provide that consistency as we move forward for the next couple of years. We have a significant amount of work in the business office, and to move to a different auditor would be a big change as we are trying to get through our last couple of years of the audit. So, excuse me, of the bond issue. So we really feel like having the firm that is, has been a part of our process for the last four years, and also because they're an excellent firm with an excellent reputation, and they do an outstanding job, we do feel like it's a significantly modest increase. And these fees, by the way, are below the 2009 through 2011 fees that we've been paying back then. So we're still below those numbers as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Just one more quick note. I'm not sure if you mentioned this, I know it's in your memo, but that we do utilize the second firm, Yo and Yo, for our bond audit. So we actually have another firm who is also retained by the district for the purpose of an independent audit of the bond funds and transactions.
And that was a, was an appointment through the continuation of the bond?
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. Is this just an annual rolling?
That's what we have done. The board could continue to do that, or we could, you could say, do this for two years, and we can talk about it again in two years. It would be the boards. We have done, we've done both in the district. We've had annual appointments, and we've had appointments for more than one year.
Anyone else? Vice President Laura, that concludes the report of the Finance Committee.
If it's agreeable to, if it's agreeable to the board to put that on the agenda for the 21st for consideration?
Regular agenda.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbey. We're going to move on to the policy committee. Mrs. Bonnefield?
We have one, sorry, we have one presentation today. Mrs. Scott will help us out with that, and it seems she's being accompanied by Mr. Archibald.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Bonnefield. As a little background on why we're updating Board Policy, JBB, which is entitled Students' Entrance Age, the revised school code, Act 451, began moving the age for kindergarteners to be enrolled in a gradual phase-in date. During the 2012-13 school year and the years previous, if you remember, the birth date for kindergarteners was December 1 for entrance. And this was very unusual, because many states already had moved theirs to a later, earlier date. Beginning with the 2013-14 school year, the kindergarten eligibility age was moved from December 1 to November 1, and then was moved to October 1st in 2014-15. And then beginning this school year, was moved to September 1, and then that's where it will remain. As you can see in your packet with the Board Policy, we have stricken some of the verbiage that's not needed anymore, and we have put in red what will be changed. So a child who resides in the school district may enroll in kindergarten if the child is at least five years of age on September 1 of the school year of enrollment, as set by the State of Michigan. And then it proceeds to say, if a child residing in the school district is not five years of age on September 1, but will be five years of age not later than December 1 of a school year, the parent or legal guardian of that child may enroll the child in kindergarten for that school year if the parent or legal guardian notifies the school district in writing that he or she intends to enroll the child in kindergarten for that school year. So most of that verbiage is the same as before. And then we went on down, said, after receiving this notification, added those words, and remained the rest the same, the school district may make a recommendation to the parent or legal guardian of the child that the child is not ready to enroll in kindergarten due to the child's age or other factors. However, regardless of this recommendation, the parent or legal guardian retains the sole discretion to determine whether or not to enroll the child in kindergarten. And just to refer to, after receiving this notification, if you look at the last page of this portion, there is an early entrance, kindergarten early entry request form, and that is the notification that would be completed and submitted. Also, at the very bottom of the Board Policy, you'll see in red about special education students. This is not new. This was on a different page contained within the JBB, and so we just included that within, on this page of the Board Policy for Students' Entrance Age instead of keeping it on a separate page. Okay?
Questions? Okay.
All right.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Scott, at the bottom, we're talking about the school district may make a recommendation based on the age or other factors. How would we know what other factors would be involved with a student of that age if they haven't been enrolled? I mean, if they were, like, in their early programs, you might know. But if they were just coming into the district, what other factors would we know about that might, might we recommend to them that the child's not ready?
Depending upon conversation with the parent, and then also at Roundup, they do some screening with the child and working with the child, and they can be able to tell them with whether or not, if they see some markers there that they feel that need to be met, you know, before they would enter kindergarten.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? And then we'll put this on as a first reading.
Yes. There are a couple of other changes. Excuse me. On the one page, it says administrative procedures. The only change on this page is that the name of the organization has changed from the North Central Association of Schools and Colleges to Advanced Ed. So that's the only change. And then Mr. Archibald is going to talk about.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Just quickly, to look at what's marked as Exhibit JBB 2. This is an exhibit that is, illustrates a letter that we would send to parents who are inquiring about homeschooling. In the first paragraph marked in red, you're summarizing that there's a change in the compulsory education age, beginning with this year's seniors. It would now be required for students to be, to remain enrolled in school from age 6 to 18, as opposed to 16, which it was previously. There are some exceptions to this. Two of them remain as they have been previously, and that is that the student is enrolled in an approved non-public school, or that the student is receiving homeschool services through their parent. And then the third bullet is that if the child has graduated from high school, again, since they've moved the age to 18, there are many students who graduate who are only 17, so obviously, they wouldn't need to continue in school. And then the last change, it is not a requirement for homeschool parents to register with the Michigan Department of Education. What this explains to them is they're not required to register with MDE unless they are requesting student services from the district, at which time then they must register. And we received that information from the county. We're able to verify that, and then student services can follow through with the families as appropriate. And that's what's explained in that last paragraph. So other than that, again, this is just a letter that we would send to families as they inquire about homeschooling.
Any questions on the list? And Mrs. O'Quinn, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but on the policies, we are only going to vote, be voting on the actual policy. The exhibits and the administrative procedures are not part of what we are voting on, if your questions or feedback, but we will only be voting on JBB on the one, on the first page. And I'll put that on as the first reading.
That's correct. The others are just for your information only with regard to the changes to the administrative procedure and the exhibits.
Okay. Does anybody have any question about that portion of it? Okay. With that, I will conclude the policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our committee of the whole meeting. We'll be back in five minutes for a special meeting, which will be a voting meeting. Good evening again, and welcome to our special meeting of March 7, 2016. This is a voting meeting. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here, and President Burton has sent her regrets of not being able to make the meeting. We have a quorum of six.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Item two is audience communication. I do not have any blue slips. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? We'll move on to item three, approval of contract extension for commissioning services, Phase III projects. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Vice President Laura.
Mr. Centers.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to extend the contract and approve the change order for Selinger Associates for Phase III commissioning services at Grant, Hoover, and Randolph Elementary Schools, Johnson Upper Elementary School, Holmes Middle School, and Stevenson High School at a cost of $105,000, including contingency costs of $17,500.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion for Mr. Centers, seconded by Mr. Johnson. And Mrs. Abbey, will you please discuss this for us?
I certainly will. I'll just make a couple of general conversation comments. We have several items this evening relative to our 2013 bond issue for this summer's projects. We did have an opportunity to discuss those in detail with Paul Terrio from Plant Moran Cressa and Scott Smith at our last community meeting, I'm sorry, building and site meeting. And so this evening, we are bringing these forward for your consideration for approval. We have two actual change orders, and then we have two new bids this evening, and I'll let Paul talk about the detail. Again, this first one is for commissioning services for our Phase III, our summer 2016 projects.
Thank you, Ms. Abbey. So we obviously went through all this detail at the last meeting. So first one we have is for Selinger Associates. They've been our commissioning agent for the last two summers. They've done a very good job. We've been very happy with their services, and we're asking to extend them out for 2016. Their contract would be for $87,500, which actually has went down from the first year as we get more efficient, and they understand better what our expectations are. Their costs have went down, which is great. And then we have $17,500 in contingency, which is how you get to the $105,000.
So because of the size of this particular amount, that it does require the Board of Education's approval for this. We don't bring every change order that we do through these processes, but because of the, this is over $100,000, this is coming to you for approval.
Any questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Moving to item four, approval of bid results, construction project for Stevenson High School. Mrs. Abbey?
Do we want a motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura. Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Stevenson High School construction project for the amount of $17,311,057 and a contingency budget amount of $1,141,197, for a total amount of $18,452,254. And authorized the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education with their recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion for Mrs. Bonnefield, seconded by Mrs. Jarvis. And now, Mrs. Abbey, I was thinking I was still at a committee meeting.
I know. It's a, it's a quick change. Thank you very much. Again, we're very excited to bring forward the bid results for the Stevenson High School renovation and auditorium construction project that will be beginning this summer and will be taking place over two years, a year and a half, as we have with Franklin High School. Very excited to bring this bid forward. As you know from our discussion at the committee meeting, there are a couple of items that we did not take the bid for, that we will be bringing back to the Board of Education at a later date for various reasons. So we will be bringing those forward, but the bulk of the projects are ready to go. Those particular projects won't hold us up. We'll be timely and ready to go for this summer. Very excited to get started. In fact, we'll be doing some work during the spring recess break as well, as you know. And actually, frankly, they're getting ready a little bit right now to get started, so everybody's ready to go. We did have an opportunity to discuss this bid in detail. As you know, we are using bond funds, as well as the board has approved up to $2.5 million of sinking fund to be used for this project, as well as the Franklin project. As you know, we have added scope of. As you know, we have added scope of work for these two schools in terms of the site work that we're doing in front of the, uh, uh, school building. This is for the entrance and exit ways, uh, and some parking lot work, uh, as it relates to the auditorium in the front of the building. So, uh, that's one of the reasons that the board had approved using that sinking fund. That had been projects that we had put off, uh, using sinking fund to do prior as we were organizing the bond and going through that process. While we had talked about the need to do that for safety and other reasons for many years, as we were doing our bond planning, we said, "Well, let's wait, do our bond planning, and then, uh, make those changes as it relates to the overall, uh, property." So that's why you're seeing that, uh, with these two projects, Franklin High School and Stevenson High School. Uh, and there were also some questions this afternoon, uh, that I think we had an opportunity to, Mrs. Oquist, to put a note, uh, in an email this afternoon, which we'd be happy to address as well. Um, I'll let Paul talk about it if I don't explain it well enough, but, uh, there was a question about what does, uh, why are there voluntary alternates listed in some of those detailed bid tabulations? And, um, from the big picture, what happens is, in, in this particular project, is, uh, some vendors wrote down voluntary alternate, and, um, Paul can discuss the actual trades and, and specifically what it is, but what there's, but what we accepted in this evening's bids are the low bid to meet specifications. So we didn't take any alternate bids. In other words, we didn't take a lower bid for an alternate project. All of the bids that we accepted this evening were the bids to our specifications. Now, what may happen after we bring these particular, uh, vendors or contractors on board as we go forward, and as they get into the project, they may say, "There's a better way to do X, Y, and Z. There's a better way to wire this room instead of going around the whole school. We'll go over the top of the roof, and that'll save you five percent. Doesn't change the overall scope. We're still getting the room with the necessary electric, et cetera, but we might be able to save some money." If Paul and, and the construction manager, AOC, and the architect say, "No, I want you to go around the room," then this bid will cover that. So what we're recommending this evening wouldn't change. Nothing would change, so they didn't, they didn't bid a lower amount. So that was probably long, but I hope that answers what the voluntary alternates are. We accepted the regular bid to meet the specifications. So with that, I'll let Paul talk about...
Sure, thank you. So, uh, again, you've seen this before, um, Section B of the binder, if you have it, um, was, uh, for Stevenson's construction project, um, totaling eighteen million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. That is a very similar project to Franklin, uh, as Ms. Abbey mentioned. We've got a new auditorium, um, we've got renovations, we've got a lot of site work at the front of the building to improve the traffic flow, so very similar project, um, a little bit less money, obviously, because there had been some renovations done previously in Stevenson, and the mechanical systems are a little bit different, and there's some nuances, but generally speaking, it's the same scope. Uh, we do have three bid divisions that we're not awarding, uh, tonight. One is, or not recommending, uh, one is the painting, another is the signage, and the third is testing and balancing. Um, a couple of those will be rebidding out, uh, another one, we're kind of doing some more due diligence on, um, so we will be back at some future date, probably in April, uh, to, uh, re-present those. Um, we have had some, uh, budget issues, as you know, um, the sinking funds helped augment some of that, but, um, I think, uh, you know, the way that we set up the original budget for the entire bond project, we were obviously conservative, making sure we had money for it if the market did turn on us, and we did come in a little bit over budget, which is kind of what's happened. So we're still in a good position overall, and we're still confident that we'll be able to get these projects done on time and overall within the budget of the bond, so. Uh, and regarding the voluntary alternates, that was a great description. I mean, we actually specifically have that...
He did give it to me ahead of time.
We do have that exact same thing where we talked about, do we bring in the new primary electrical wiring around the building, or do we go into the building and down into the tunnels and go through the tunnels? Do we go through the ceiling space, um, or do we go over the roof? So that's one instance where the electrical contractor has bid, but we asked them to bid, but they've said, "By the way, if we go over on the roof, it might save you twenty or thirty thousand dollars." So we'll certainly consider that. We'll have the engineers weigh in, we'll have the maintenance guys weigh in, because they're the ones that have to service that in the future. Uh, and if it's, um, a viable way to save money and reduce costs and, uh, no discernible, uh, you know, change in the overall function, then we'll certainly consider it, so.
Any questions or comments? Mrs. McDonald?
Um, thank you. Um, Paul, I'm assuming then that, that practice of voluntary alternates during the construction process is pretty common and a common practice within the industry?
It is. Um, you know, a lot of the contractors are looking to either give us sometimes a combined bid deduct, where if, let's say, the mechanical guy, uh, bids the plumbing and the mechanical, and he says, "Well, if you give me both, I can reduce my costs." Uh, voluntary alternates are another way for them to try to, um, show that they're actually interested in the project, that they've actually been out on at the site, that they've reviewed the scope, that they're thinking creatively. Uh, we typically don't let those drive someone low, right? So we wanted them to bid base specifications and the base drawings. If they have a great idea to save us money after we award it to them, we're happy to talk through that and discuss it, and obviously, if there's a savings to the district, that's all the better, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Centers?
Just a comment, uh, if you're listening earlier, you heard a, a budget, uh, summary from Ms. Abbey, and she wasn't talking at all about construction costs. Um, if you are just tuning in and you're not really familiar with, um, how we repay for these, that we have a bond that the, uh, community is supporting to, uh, update our buildings. That, uh, so seventeen million dollars is a huge number, um, and you look at our budget, which is a hundred forty-four million or so, um, that is not general fund revenue. We can't use that for, uh, to run operations in the school, but they will mo- help modernize our buildings and, uh, make them look beautiful. But, so, if someone's just tuning in, uh, a reminder on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion made by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item five, approval of bid results, rebid for Johnson Ele- Upper Elementary School and Holmes Middle School. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura.
Mr. Johnson?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the construction rebid for Phase Three at Johnson Upper Elementary School and Holmes Middle School for construction and contingency costs of fifty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars, for a total revised cost of twelve million, four hundred twenty-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars for these projects, and authorize Assistant Superintendent for Business Services to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education. Support.
Motion was made by Mrs. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Abbey, you busy tonight?
Thank you very much. Yes, um, as you know, we had, uh, previously asked the Board of Education to approve the majority of the bids for Johnson Upper Elementary and Holmes Middle School for Phase Three for the summer projects, and you may recall that, uh, with this summer, we will have updated and renovated all of our upper elementaries and middle schools, so very excited about that. Um, but, uh, we did have one, uh, trade that we needed to rebid, um, and that was the steelwork, and this, uh, what you're, what we're recommending this evening is that rebid, um, for, as we said, fifty-three thousand, two forty-five. And then what we provided in your packet is an updated of the total budget and the total cost, so you have that overall, um, adjustment to what we had brought to you previously for the total cost for Johnson and Holmes. So with that, uh, any questions?
Questions or comments? The motion was made by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the roll, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, approval of bid results, Phase Three painting at Randolph Elementary School. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the painting construction bid for Phase Three at Randolph Elementary for construction and contingency costs of one hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars, for a revised cost at Randolph of three million, four hundred thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, and a total revised cost of nine million, nine hundred ten thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars for the elementary projects, and authorize Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support. Motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And again, Mrs. Abbey?
Thank you. Uh, we did have an opportunity at our building and site committee meeting to review this bid result for, um, painting at Randolph. Uh, I think this is the last item that we need to bring forward for Randolph, uh, but Paul, correct me if not, uh, as you know, we had, um, received several bids for the painting project, but because of the unique condition of the painting at Randolph, we wanted to spend some time evaluating those bid proposals, making sure that we had the right, uh, the right, um, process going forward, so that we didn't have any issues with painting at that school, and so we are bringing that forward to you today. And again, uh, the documentation not only updates the total cost for Randolph, but the total cost for our elementary projects for this summer.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanna, uh, thank Ms. Abbey and Paul for their due diligence with us. Uh, it would be a huge disappointment to have a brand-new school and then just, you know, weeks or months later have peeling paint. So, uh, the, the process of going back, you know, doing this right and, uh, taking the time to do that is very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number seven, approval of security proposal for Phase Two projects. May I have a motion?
Vice President Laura.
Mrs. McDonald.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to extend the contract of security systems for Security Designs Incorporated for Phase Three, two thousand thirteen bond projects at Grant, Hoover, and Randolph Elementary Schools, Johnson Upper Elementary School, Holmes Middle School, and Stevenson High School at a total cost of one hundred seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars, including, including a contingency of seventeen thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars.
Support. Motion was made by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Abbey?
Thank you. Again, this is a actual change order that we're recommending this evening, um, for security and, uh, to continue on with Phase Three, and, um, since Paul hasn't had much chance to talk, I'll give him an opportunity to go through this one.
So this is actually for the security system and for the access control system, uh, for each of the buildings listed. Uh, Security Designs, uh, has been the district's vendor for many years. Um, we competitively bid them out the first summer, and they were the low bidder, uh, low responsible bidder, and they've done a great job for us the last two years, especially for me, because it, it's inevitable that in August, the day before school opens, there's a door that doesn't have a proxy card on it, or a, uh, electric strike, and they've been great at jumping out and getting it done for us, uh, at the last minute, so, uh, we're happy to recommend them again.
Questions or comments?
I do have one question.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. Um, Paul, it's, um, based on their fees from the past projects, I probably should know this, but, um, the fees are consistent?
Yep, we actually, uh, had them give us unit prices for everything and labor rates for everything, uh, the first summer. I think they had a small escalator, maybe two or three percent per year, uh, but other than that, the costs are consistent with the unit prices.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
And that would be, any vendor would provide that escalation?
Mm-hmm.
If you're asking them to commit to, to multiple years.
Yep.
Thank you.
Motion made by Mrs. McDonald, seconded by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the roll?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the last item on our agenda, item eight, appointment of an...
I did want to say before I go, thank you for making this a special board meeting. We try not to ask very often, but I think it's great that we got this out a little bit earlier than last year, and it should help a lot with ordering materials and everything, so, thank you.
And thank you for your information and for being with us this evening.
Absolutely.
Item number eight, appointment of investment advisor recommendations. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura.
Mr. Centers?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the recommendation to appoint PFM Group to act as the investment advisor for the two thousand thirteen bond, Series Two proceeds for a total of, a total cost of ninety-two thousand, three hundred dollars.
Support. Motion was made by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And one more time, Mrs. Abbey, please.
Thank you very much. Um, the, uh, what we're bringing forward this evening is a recommendation to change, uh, investment advisors from the group that we had for the Series One. Uh, the Series One, they certainly didn't, we had an opportunity to talk about this at a study session as well and, uh, provide you some information previously, but they certainly did, uh, what we asked of them to do. Uh, you may recall that the group that we used at that time were association, associated with Stotterbarch Financial Consulting, the consulting company that we've, uh, utilized in Livonia Public Schools for probably twenty-plus years. Um, and they help us with our millages, uh, as it relates to bonds, or when we have our debt millage, uh, each year, and they also help us as we do, uh, annual filings with, um, municipal organizations as it relates to our bonds. Uh, that's the Fin- uh, Stotterbarch Financial Group. Um, they were purchased, uh, last summer. Uh, Stotterbarch was by PFM, and at that time, the, basically, the two individuals that made up Stotterbarch Advisors that were helping us with our Phase One proceeds, um, branched off into their own firm. And, uh, while they certainly did an adequate job, and we felt, um, that they refined when they were associated with Stotterbarch directly, uh, when they went off on their own, we really felt, given the, the large sum of proceeds as we move forward with Series Two, uh, that we wanted a firm that had a little more depth and breadth and, um, uh, was just a little bit larger firm in order to, to work with us. So at that time, we looked at a couple of different options, uh, including getting quotes from two other financial advisor, advising firms, uh, as well as looking at some opportunities with, um, banks, and I had, and I did provide you with that detail as to why we thought it was, made more prudence to go forward with an advisor, um, through, through the process, and, uh, as I mentioned, basically what they will be doing is taking the proceeds based on the cash flow. We'll work with Plant Moran Cressa, they'll provide us a cash flow, so you hear about all the projects that we're doing. So as we look forward, um, they'll look at this summer's spending, as well as estimates for the next couple of summers, help us put together an investment portfolio that, number one, protects our assets, and number two, provides the best investment, uh, instruments that we can get, and then they help us monitor that. So for example, if we find that we're not using cash as quickly as we thought, or we're using it a little more quickly than we thought, they may, may make some recommendations to change those investments based on any changes in cash flow or in market conditions. Um, so we do think that that requires a, a certain amount of, um, depth in, in an office in order to, to do that. Uh, and so we did get those quotes, uh, you have that in your bid packet, the firm that we had used previously, as well as, um, um, PFM Group, as well as UMBah. They are certainly, uh, UMBah is certainly capable of doing the job, and their fees were a little bit less, but we really felt like PMF was much more seamless. There, they do many, many, many school districts across the state of Michigan. They're kind of that go-to firm across the state of Michigan as far as, um, providing They're kind of that go-to firm across the state of Michigan as far as providing that service. And they, many, many, and they're very, very well-versed in Michigan, state of Michigan investment requirements. They really provide a turnkey opportunity and operation for us. So we really felt like for Livonia Public Schools, that makes the most sense at this time to move forward with them. They were a little bit high when we talked to them compared to the other firms, so we did ask them if they would move their fees a little bit from the last bid tabulation. And so this, tonight's tabulation in your board packet reflects that revised fee amount and is a savings of about a little over $15,000 from what we had originally recommended. So again, the fees are very close between UMBah and, and PFM, but we really feel that we would recommend PFM based on their experience in the state of Michigan. So with that, any questions?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in a nutshell, we were working with one company, they changed their name, the people, the individual advisors with whom we were working left the company. And if we take this...
They moved with, and changed their name.
Okay, so if we take this recommendation, we'll be staying with the same company, just it has a different name, but not the same individual advisors?
Sort of. Pretty darn close. So it, so, so there's two things called Stotter Barch and two organizations called PFM. So there's what was Stotter Barch Financial Consulting, again, very large financial consultant that helped us for 20 years on, on our, help us with any of our millage issues, debt issues, bond issues. Then when we, then there's the advisor, Stotter Barch Advisor. So they're the ones that help with the investments, not the bonds and not the millage, but with the investments. Stotter Barch Financial Consulting got bought out by PFM. They're now PFM. Same people there, Paul Stotter, who you've heard me use his name, he's been to board meetings, you've, you've met him. They're all still there. They'll still do their thing if we ever have another bond issue, and I hope Paul's retired by then, but if we ever have another bond issue and need a financial consultant, we would pick up the phone and use them as well. The, the people that were at financial advisors, the investment people, when they got bought out by PFM, they did not stay. They left and, and started their own company because PFM already had an investment advisor firm. Investment Group is what they call it, PFM Group. But they already had a group, so they didn't need the firm that was there. So they left, went off, and did their own thing, which is absolutely fine. Those two people are working under another name now, but we didn't feel that they had the depth and breadth that we need based on the size of this investment portfolio. Long answer. Everybody has the same name, so it's a little confusing, but two financial companies and two investment companies. Investment consulting companies.
Anything else? Motion is made by Mr. Centers, seconded by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Mc, I'm sorry. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. I got my tongue, tongue twisted up. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Abby, thank you so much for all the information, for all the items on this agenda.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And for the special meeting.
Aye. Anything from any board members that anyone like to add? Mrs. Oakwood?
I'll say, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for filling in this evening. Good job.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And with that, this concludes our special meeting of March 7th, 2016. We are adjourned. Good evening.